I don't know how high their potential fund is over there.
Uh, yeah, but but they have been pumping it down and and it that thing is loud. Temporary pump is very loud, but if it gets the job done, they they should run that during the daytime. They shouldn't run that at night.
So, I'm gonna I'm gonna just ask this question. It may not work, but for the sake of time, I'm gonna ask anyway. Since we're talking, we've already issued a cease and desist for for Panther Hill. This is a, this is a simple yes or no question. Have they come into the compliance of issues that we?
Or the cool.
Move on, we don't need to up there, they have not, you know.
But that doesn't stop them. Well, part of the why we wanted on here is what can they do?
They can do anything with a cease and desist.
Well, so so let's keep in mind what the cease and desist is for. That they won't, they can't continue construction. Now, you still have people in other buildings and you had originally chosen not to displace any people. If this continues on for a long period of time, you may want to morph into a you can't enter into new leases. Or you can't, I mean, so think about other options as you move forward. Technically, you could kick everybody out of there. That's not your intention, because you don't wanna do that to the students. Get that. But at some point, if they don't start moving.
We're talking like, I mean, like another temporary suspension? That means you can't.
No, 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 a full cease and desist and a revocation of their certificates.
A cease and desist is just on additional construction.
Additional construction.
We 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 could go further and say that they can't renew leases or other than.
I get that, but I just want to know what.
The current one. Yeah, the current is to stop all development and construction work at that location, which is technically two addresses.
So it's simple, so it's simple. Is that where we, are we at, are we at that, are we at that point yet to where we're willing to?
Uh, I wanna look at the fact that maybe we should, but I'm not, I'll be honest, I'm not ready to make that decision today. Um, about renewing leases, because it is that time of the year that's starting to come up, but if if.
Oh, not the renewal of leasing leases, them them signing new leases.
Yeah, no, it's the renewal, because you gotta.
Well, renewal is a new lease, yeah, so once it ends, so that's.
Yeah, let me ask this, though. The two issues, as as I recall, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, at Panther Hill, that were ordinance violations had to do with the detention, retention pond, whatever you call it, and the swimming pool.
Correct.
Right?
Now, now the swimming.
You 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 had a meeting. Well, those are the two ordinance violation situations that we talked about?
No, we definitely talked about those, but the basis for the cease and desist was the fact that they didn't have any approved civil engineering plans. So they based it on that, although there were many other things discussed, they based it on the the civil engineer drawings.
Did they currently, we currently have approved drawings for Panther Hill?
Yes.
Signed off by you and sign off by?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, we have stamped and dated drawings, but approved plans, no.
All right, so then this is, this is what we got into last time, because we were trying to pick all these things. But we could just use not having stamp approved plans, civil plans. And so the question is, uh, like the mayor was saying, he's trying to go through a checklist to to get to them to say, hey, we need to do this. Can we, uh, but they already know, but part of this is a is a task in fertility is because they already know that we've asked for the plans time and time again and we haven't received them.
So we know, we know, we know where we are in the in the process, we know what the issues are. So we, the question is, would we go, what's the next step? Is the next step sending another letter saying, hey, you have X amount of time to come into compliance, or?
Yeah, that's that's why.
So.
That's, it it takes time to.
We can give them sixty days.
I don't, well, can you put up, can you put a pump in in sixty days?
We're saying temporally, so remember, we just asked them to come into compliance.
They can't put a pump in until the drawings are approved, so so let's be clear.
And then temporary pumps, which is what we're telling campus says to do.
We're saying the drawings aren't approved, we're not even talking about pumps, we're not even talking about all the other things. We're talking about the most basic fact, that we don't have approved plans. And so if that's saying, if that's saying that we get those plans and then we give our engineer and whoever else needs to look at the utility plans, so many days to receive them, because they're saying, they're not even coming to the table. The engineer says he has.
So you have plans.
We have stamped and dated plans. Those plans, after following our review, because of the, because of the absences, what, well.
It's not approved by.
You have to have the plans, and the plans have to be approved, that they have not been approved.
Approved by the city's engineers.
Okay, so are they, so then the next step is, since you're the approver.
Yep.
Are they working with you to do the things that need to be done?
They're working with us, but they're not done yet.
Okay, yeah, they're not done, that's.
But also a sense of urgency, so we can keep playing this game and saying, okay, well, we'll come back in two weeks, but uh, council member John Durando brought us a valid point at which, what is the next step? So what is a certain amount of time that would be okay?
Adequate.
Adequate, that working with you with forty-five days, okay, to get the plans approved by you?
To get the plans approved, correct, it's not gonna get a pump put in.
At this point, we just need progress, we need to see.
But they made progress on the swimming pool, I I can I can attest to that.
Okay, so if we don't receive that, if you signed off on the plans in forty-five days, then that means that council would then move to the actions of not renewing any, uh, leases by the upcoming year.
So so it goes back to my my previous statement, since they have, since they have already come to the table, we don't have to send the letter. The letter was to send, was to bring them to the table. So since they're already at the table, trying to get things right, we don't have to send a letter. Now, if that changes. Then we take different steps, but now that they're, now, the whole point from the beginning is we've been trying to get them to the table. So now we've got, finally gotten to the table, and and in the event that their willingness to get things right changes.
No, I I would, I'm gonna show you something why.
Look, so understand with the letter, so the letter is saying, if you don't do this, this happens, but they're already in the process of doing this.
They're right.
So that's what I'm saying, so what is the le, what is the purpose of the letter?
So not an additional letter, what what we found, which is part of, which is part of the problem. We wanted, we wanted some concerted effort that they were going to do right. What we found in the cease and desist and why I asked for it to be back on the agenda, why I asked for a copy to be put in everyone's box. It wasn't until we got to this process, when the attorney was doing the research, that we found that they had sold the property, half the property to another company that they opened within forty days, which means all the blocking and things that's been going on, us saying two weeks a month was done intentionally to be sold to another company. Now, the question is, could that that have happened if it wasn't platted? The company just would, just just came up forty days ago. So when we, when we issued this, that would have been in within thirty days, which means January one, they was opening a new company, sold half the property under the, that's why I got two names on it. We thought we've been talking about broad, broad, uh, born properties in. They opened another company called PV Apartments in.
But but if the cease and desist is on the property, does it matter who the owner is?
Yes, it does.
If it does.
So we need, so we need to reissue this?
No, no, I caught it. I got your back, buddy.
She caught, she caught, no, it's here. But what I'm saying, what I'm saying is when we talk about, we we have to be, if we step back and we talk about all the connections, just like one of the issues with the bill. Just like, um, oh, I won't put it, I won't give that example, but there's there's the address, the registered person. The same, they opened another property name, same, uh, address, same person as the agent. I don't know what they tried to do, but again, they opened another company, sold half the buildings to another person, same address and registered. Should that that, then to sell that property, it should have been platted first, did that happen? And then we talk about, well, why would they do that if, again, we remember, we have a number of bills that haven't been paid, a number of things that haven't been paid, so we gotta start connecting the dots if we step back. We got water bill, we got, you know, all the all the labor that's going on. So again, I'm saying, we want, we, they have come to the table, I'm assuming. But the question is, is their intent to make good? We're not trying to force anybody out of business, but but when they do stuff like this, that we just didn't, we caught this only because we issued a cease and desist. We didn't know this.
But we never, we would never catch that on a private property. For example, we never caught it when they bought it.
Let's get to that.
So what is?
Well, so let me be clear about what happened here. They didn't sell off half of their buildings. The property has always been in two separate properties. The detention pond is in the original name, the apartments were sold, sold off. So, but the apartment you have on your water bill, for example, is the detention pond. So it it, it's one of the things that your engineer is going to tell you, they're not going to get approved drawings based upon their detention plan until they replat the property, because you can't have your detention on a separate parcel owned by a separate person. I I mean, you can ask him.
Yeah, you can't have it.
So.
You have to replat the property, it has to be one.
The question remains the same, where are we going moving forward?
What's next?
We've identified, we've identified at at the issue, another issue, what, you, Councilwoman?
The question, so what, what, what?
We're saying.
Council says she caught that, so.
She she caught it only be, what I'm saying is they didn't come in intentionally or try to make good. We keep giving them the benefit of the doubt. We wanted them at the table, but the question is, are they truly at the table and trying to work through the issues? We've been asking for, the number one issue on why they have a cease and desist is civil engineering plan. This project is over two.
So once again.
So the next, the next thing needs to be, either we're gonna revocate COs, we're gonna revocate leases, or we go to the next part, that needs to be in a letter, that that needs to be in an additional letter, because we haven't had a follow-up.
We're about to spell this out very simply. The biggest issue that we've been talking about is that it needs to be approved, the the structural, uh, civil engineering plans. That that's number one. You said that they can get it done in forty-five days, correct?
Yes, they gave us.
So I say, because we know that what the pattern is, why we keep coming back to this, is if we're gonna put the pressure on them to act in compliance, so that those that are living there are are staying in a place that they know that the engineering plan is there. I said, we go for what we know is gonna make them move, which is the, which is the leases. So I say, I move that forty-five days, that they need to come into compliance with the, or having the ci, the city engineer approve of their plans, and if not, we block them from having, uh, leases renewed.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just make.
Hold on, we got a motion. It's been properly moved and seconded, that if they don't come into compliance in forty-five days, that you disallow new leases, all right? I say that right? Okay, I'm ready, Miss, go ahead.
I'm 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 confused about the state of action, because this this action isn't action. We could literally just wait forty-five days if we don't have the the approval. We could just go with the next step. We're, we're, we're wasting money, basically, gonna drop another letter that says something that we don't even, we don't have to say anything. We've given them time, and if we're saying we're gonna give them forty-five days, why not just wait forty-five days and if we don't have it, then we wrote the COs?
And have the engineer tell them.
And then have the engineer, like, what what is the, I'm I'm confused about the purpose of the letter.
My unreadyness was that us saying, because we're going to, uh, I I would say that because we have not threatened in action over this months of conversation, I would think that's why he he suggested that we do that, but what you're saying.
How would they know that forty-five days to bring something that actually don't be taking place?
They don't need to know.
They, nah, that's.
No, that, that, that's.
They are ready.
They know, they know that they they needs to have the the civil engineering plans two years ago.
Yes, but.
Why do we have to tell them, we need, they need to come in forty-five days? Either they're gonna, either they're gonna willingly do it, so going back to what Councilwoman says about the deception. Either they're gonna willingly do it, or they're not gonna willingly do it.
Oh, we put time on to do it, not like the motion that you made, so I'll call for the court.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, have the same, right?
Opposed.
I was having, anything else, Mr. Underwood?
I'm sure, do you have anything else for us, Mr. Underwood?
I'll just say that that some of the property was purposeful, for some reason, I don't know.
It it was done in December, just in December.
And and so are we, are we positioned, and I know we still got some, are we positioned, like, we shouldn't be having to play defense in a property, in a, in a, in a, to a developer in our community, that we want to be successful. And we wanna let the record show that that we want them to be successful, but to do the blatant things that they continue to do day after day, playing this little circle, that's that's disingenuous. And so the question is, are we set up, uh, and this could be a question for the engineer or the question for Attorney Griffin. Based upon the things that has happened, based upon our cease and desist and the letter we sent out on the twenty-ninth, where are we positioned? I mean, they they owe us in a number of different sections of 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 bills and costs, and we start, we start talking, not, like, what do we, what do we do, I guess?
So let me be clear, if you're not willing to displace your students, you are where you are. I mean, that's a choice that you're making out of good conscience, I understand a hundred percent why you're doing that. But I mean, your actual action is to pull everything and say shut down.
Yeah.
To red tag them, as JJ would say, and literally shut them down. I, and and I mean, so I don't know who's got who over a barrel here, because I don't think you're willing to do that.
Mister Mayor, with the current things that you, your current engagement that you've had, let's just say in the last thirty days. Are, is, I mean, you're, you represent, you're, you represent the city. Are we moving in a direction, based upon information, I don't know if you've heard this for the first time or if you knew about it, are we moving in a direction to where we can get the movement that council and the city is looking for in the next forty-five? Like, is there any suggestions that you that you want us to do, because you're the one handling this day to day, and so.
Let me, let me answer that, I mean, it's a good point, let me answer it. Um, on Campus Edge, council said that they need to at least get a temporary pump. At Panther Hill, they're already doing a temporary pump, and they have represented to our city engineer, Mr. Underwood, that they're ordering, I guess they have to be built and it takes a while or something. So, uh, USW is telling us it's gonna take a minute, but we do know, and most of us, because I I thought they had one, because I've seen one, I didn't know it was temporary, because I don't know anything about those things. But they've been pumping theirs out, which is exactly what we said we want Campus Edge to do. So with the engineer telling us that they're working on those things and they've had progress, uh, I think we're we're saying as though he didn't say that. So they are moving in the direction that you said you wanted.
We're speaking about the civil plans in general.
No, but the approval of the plan, Mr. Underwood, you have the plans.
They gave us a new set of plans last week.
So the approval is from Mister Underwood, and the approval is based on them doing the things that he says they're working on.
Mister, but we can ask.
Tell me what you're asking.
We can ask Mister Underwood, how many ti, how many sets of plans has he received? He's gonna tell you several, so I mean, I I thought, Mister Mayor, I thought you were going, I. I I thought you were going to, again, we've been having a good meeting, I thought you were going to, you know, reassure us, but you just went back to doing the same thing. We add, we're talking about the civil plans that we should have had, because you engaged with the developer day to day. Can you, do you think that the things we put in place is gonna help benefit the city in general moving forward? Because right now.
Yes, that's, that's why you put them in place, I thought that's the purpose. Yes, Councilman Jones.
Uh, what, uh, are we on H or?
We on, uh.
H, right, we just talked each other.
Actually, we covered.
Did we cover the G and H, Mr. Underwood?
I got a, I got a question on you about about the gates, because one thing we're not talking about is campus, there's the gates, and they're making a lot of movement, but we don't know where the element passes.
So the, um, uh, we did have a meeting with LJ A to talk about the issues they have over there, which are are primarily detention.
And 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 for the record, this is LJ A representing the gates.
Correct.
Not really representing the city.
That's correct, yeah, so the issue there is that their drawings show no detention at all. So they're looking for alternative measures to deal with this.
So how they, how they come to that construction without previous plans?
So what, we gave them a conditional.
Wait, 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 did you do that with, because, so we're talking about the detention, did you talk about how to get in and out of those areas?
Yes, sir, we did. I think the roadways.
Yeah, or through the neighborhood.
And and with the, and then the question is, we, we've heard about this text out, do we have a letter? Do we have anything saying it's gonna be, uh, easement or right of way? And so I I would ask that, even on the gates, if we, we need to, I think we we don't wanna be in the situation we have with Panther Hill and Campus Edge, letting a project move forward, and then if they're going back to do the same thing, the the engineer for them was the engineer for the city on two other projects. They should know better, but for to them to try to then.
So so where I was going with that is, I can speak for myself and 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 City Councilman, that we don't, we don't want them building apartments where the entry and exit ways were through a neighborhood.
Yeah, and nobody does.
Then then let's, let's take it one step further. Uh, council, we need you to get with engineer and and take a look at that and see, based on what they bought, when they bought it, what it was zoned for, what our options are or aren't.
We can't control what they do with the property, but we can control what they do.
Well, I I don't know, the the streets at both ends run onto their property. That that little bit I know. So that's why I'm saying, let's let legal take a look at it and and give us that engineering opinion.
We can have a conversation, I'm not familiar with the gates at all.
Yeah, they're in the backside, but but even even that street, even with a conditional approval, we should have made them do a transfer, uh, traffic, uh.
Impact analysis?
Yeah, impact analysis, traffic, because again, if they're using two streets that, one street ain't even open right now, the other street, you gotta go through it, through a whole neighborhood, right? And so I'm saying, what is the conditional permit for? Because we don't wanna be ninety days from now, they have a full development and we still, or or what is the conditional permit for, uh, of the conditional approval that you give?
Well, so let me just tell you how we got to that conditional approval. It was brought to our attention that in the absence of having a conditional approval, that your financing would be lost and an entire project would be gone. So what we said to them was.
For the second time.
For the second time. So what we said to them was that we don't see any of these issues that are insurmountable. Here are some things you need to agree to do, and if you agree to do those things, then we could issue a conditional approval. If they don't do them, then it.
We need to act their traffic.
That traffic is a major thing.
So so that's, so have we got, we got those, the things they agreed to, you've gotten that?
We're working on those, we're working on, include detention point and all of that, we've come up with two scenarios by which they may or may not need.
And then on the traffic thing, the thing that the mayor talked about, about text out and all this, these are things that we want to happen, that are these, have they approved this? Because they're, they're betting on two things, text out giving us approval on the access road, and then I'm assuming another outlet coming around the loop, which is also text out. And so I'm saying, have we, have the, have they either gotten the easement from the people who own the property around the loop, or have we gotten a letter from text out on the other side? And I'm saying, we could be working with them, but it it just seems like none of that has moved.
Yeah, so let me work with the city engineer on that. I don't believe that this is zoned under a special use permit. I don't believe you have any zoning conditions on the fact that they can build an apartment complex here, and I don't know how much control you have over a traffic, when it has original multifamily jurisdictional zoning there, which I I don't know this project, so I can't tell you. So let us, let us get together, you may have no control over that traffic.
Well, I, so our review is really about capacity and ability. It it, we don't, like, if it's not zoned to stop them, then the question we have to answer is, can those roadways address the capacity that they're talking about putting in?
No, and they can't. We're talking, we're talking about one, one lane road, and and then one lane's not even open to come through this other side.
The one thing I talked to, uh, David Peters, your engineer, about was something to run on the east side of the Gates property, down to and connect to Philip Street or something, who the owners of that property are now, you know, more open and receptive to, because they're trying to open their thing as well. So that was, so it's it's been being worked on, but this stuff takes a long time. The gates was shut down for eight, nine months after losing their financing the first time, so there's been nobody to talk to. But now that they're back up and working under conditional, we are looking and and again, we'll have to pick up on what your engineer feels.
So what is the, what is your current permit? Because obviously they have some permit, because they're they're doing stuff, so what what is their current permit?
Have they put in a taffy? Their permit is based on working on things.
So they did get.
What is the permit give, allows them to do, the permit, whatever permit that they have?
It allows them to start construction because of some, the all of the things that, not all of them, but after we reviewed their initial drawings, eighty percent of the companies were on water sewer, which they they're not even there yet. So they just wanted to get started. Now, uh, the big thing was detention, because it didn't show it on the drawings at all. So our conditional approval was based on what we saw on paper, on the drawings only, that's all we had. And the drawings were satisfactory such that they could go ahead and get started, and the issues that we did find, we didn't see them as being insurmountable, water sewer, detention, they got two options to deal with that, so.
In traffic, what do you discuss?
Well, no, this issue of this other road was brought up in in terms of an additional access.
But we haven't, so I'm saying that would be an issue. When does that come up so we can, if if that's gonna be the the option to alleviate it, that's us dedicating a road, that's us getting the right of way, that whole process, why aren't we talking about that?
Well, we have had the engineer look into it, that's what you just heard me talk to him, we're gonna go back and revisit it, because they are shut down, so now that they're back up, we'll take more look at that.
What we can do, maybe this will help sort of move things along, we can give a full report specific to the gates next week, in terms of conditional approval, what was in that, what wasn't in it, uh, what are the options for their access? We can give a full report on that next council meeting. That'll give you and I a chance to talk about something. Because I I just, I'm concerned about saying that they, I'm concerned about saying they can't drive through the neighborhood. That's a concern.
Okay, so could we go to H? So are we, are we down with H?
Is there anything that you had on the, what's that, on the gates, USW?
Yes, actually, there was, um, excuse me. Excuse me for my tardiness, I have another meeting that falls on this day, so I had to drive all the way from the east side back over here to the west side, so I apologize.
We should have done it.
Thank you. Uh, so yes, so we did meet, uh, with the developers, um, over there, uh, at the gates on February twenty-first. And they did not, they did not have, they did have their civil utility drawings, uh, but they did not have a copy for us, uh, to review. So they they told us that they would email us over a copy, which is fine, uh, so we're waiting to get that copy. One of the things that was discussed during that meeting is that, uh, they wanted a six-inch, uh, meter installed uh, to supply water for some sub-meters, so that's something that we definitely wanna look at when we look at the drawings, uh, to make sure that, uh, there's no restrictions or any type of water loss or anything like that. And then, uh, something else that was mentioned is that they had planned on tying into, um, a sanitary manhole that gravity flows to duly road lift station, and that's gonna be another concern, because the amount of housing uh, that's gonna be on this development, that's gonna be a lot of flow of, uh, of sewage into this manhole. This particular manhole is about three feet deep, and so that's not a whole lot of capacity, uh, for that amount of flow.
So do they need to build a manhole, do they want to take to correct that, or do they need to shift that?
So, so, like I said, we haven't reviewed the drawings yet, uh, so we wanna see if they're, you know, they said it's gonna flow to this manhole, we don't know if it's gonna, if it's a lift station that's gonna pump over to this manhole, and it's gonna be gravity to the manhole, so these are things that we're gonna have to work through, uh, with with the contractor.
I have a question.
Yes.
I know we talked about, and then that was the, you know, in the conversation with, uh, Nick Houston. We're talking about, um, the water, expanding water wells and, um, is it lift station, yeah, lift, we talked about expanding water wells and lift stations in preview. And the question is, on these new developments, when we get further opportunities to pre-plan, we can can make the same investment infrastructure that we would normally do or go after grant funding to offset some costs and help with the, help with that development? Is this something that we're talking about, or are we still kinda?
I know exactly where you're going with that, so yes, that's something that we would recommend, is that whether they put in a lift station or wanna do gravity flow, that they tie in directly to duly road lift station, uh, duly road lift station has a capacity for a third pump, so that's something that we would, uh, try to get them to to pay for.
Now, didn't you say they would be tying into it now, but you're saying running a straight line, another straight line, other than the main line into duly?
Right now, they would be tying into a sanitary manhole that gravity feeds to duly, but the capacity of that manhole is probably, um, a hundred gallons, you know, it's.
So you'll check and see what the other options is once you get the plans.
Right.
Now, well, one thing, um, that Mister Bostick is bringing up for council is where he referenced, they didn't have a set of plans for him. We don't have anything saying they're supposed to. We've always requested two for Bureau Veritas and one for the civil engineer. Uh, Mister Bostick and USW is somewhat of a recent addition, and ordinances have not been updated to say we want four set of plans. Two for inspectors and one for them and one for you, because you've been having to circle back, but that's only because, uh, you weren't formally in the process, because they had someone in-house. But that's only because, uh, you weren't formally in the process because they had someone in-house kinda do that and looking at it. So I think in order to correct that, we need to update whatever the respective ordinance is so that with the permits, people know we need whatever set of plans you need, the water plumbing lines or whatever, and what.
It would definitely speed up the process. That way we're not waiting on trilogy to review.
Yeah, they come in, they go to you just like they go to the others.
Can we put that on the next meeting? Thank you.
Okay. So we'll get those to you.
Okay. And that's all we have right now, but we will have, uh, more to report on the gates at the next meeting. But we should receive those drawings hopefully this week.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, item twenty-two, discuss and take action on having the Black Dollar Block Party for Black History Month at City Hall lawn. Councilman Wallace?
Yeah, so it is Black History Month. Um, so Black Dollar Block Party would just be a quick out or Black businesses can also be explored at the same time. What you asking to have on City Hall lawn, uh, this Saturday?
Councilman Jones?
I move that we approve to have the Black Dollar Block Party for Black History Month at the City Hall lawn.
Second, it's been properly moved and seconded that the city, that, that we have the Black Dollar Block Party for Black History Month at the City Hall lawn. For the motion, ready for questions? Councilman Randy?
Is there a date? Yeah, I, I just, I just added that for one of four.
Any other agents? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passed. Uh, New Park Trail, we talked about it, uh, before and I'll just skip on the twenty-three, twenty-four. Discuss pledge security listing. That was where I, uh, I took a look. Typically FDIC ensures two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I don't know if it's per account or per entity, but I know we got a few accounts at Prosperity with more than that. I know there's some bond thing, but what I thought about was to have our current city attorneys being as proficient as they have to take a look at it to make sure we indemnify if anything happens.
Can I just sit there?
Hold, hold on, let me finish. I, I, I want our city attorneys to take a look at it because like our ordinances, it wouldn't be the first time that we can improve on something. Yes, Mr. Jones?
For your, for your current financial policy, and this is for TMA also, you, we require our depository to pledge a hundred and two percent. And that's what they're pledging here, a hundred and two percent. And so this right here meets all the requirements. The city is fully collateralized with this pledge.
Great. I just need you to copy that pledge to the city attorney so that they can, yeah. No, that's good. It's good, it's good.
It's an honor.
Right, okay. Sounds good. Anything else, Councilman?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.